About over where you guys are at with the winds are really picking up.
Oh, really? Not here yet. Just blow on the other way. Okay. It is 7:00 PM. I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order on Wednesday, April 27, 2022. This is a continued public hearing of the 40B application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as a sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, to construct 136-unit apartment complex for which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16, 2021, at School Street, Assessors Map Number 43, Lot Number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27, 2021. Tonight, we will be discussing the applicant's request to connect to municipal water and sewer. In April of 2020, the state issued a new national pollutant discharge elimination system, recognized the substantial work the town had done to reduce the inflow and infiltration, which was entering the system through the sewer, thereby freeing up capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. In December 2021, DEP and the state lifted our moratorium on new connections. For members of the public who are listening, most of the documents we will be referencing tonight are in the 40B section on the town website under Water and Sewer. We will be taking public comment on the water and sewer request later in this meeting. The original application included an onsite wastewater treatment facility. On March 25, 2022, Mr. Engler sent the ZBA a letter requesting connection to the municipal sewer, changed the waiver requests that had been made relative to the onsite system, and changed the architectural and landscape designs. Mr. Engler or your consultant, would you please explain why you decided to make this change?
For the record, Jeff Engler, SLV School Street, representing the applicant. Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. In summary, the change was made because it's been clear to us that environmental concerns and considerations are of paramount importance to the to the town and to a greater extent, the citizens that have been attending all these public meetings. And by eliminating the onsite treatment system, it allows us to reduce a lot of the infrastructure on the site, have materially less impacts on the resource areas and vernal pools than the previous design. Notice I did not say no impact, but comparatively less. We have more flexibility with the site plan relative to, I believe, Mr. Bomer had indicated some need for additional quote-unquote slack. Should we need to shift the footprint at all, which we don't think we will need to, but in the event we did, we would be able to. So in summary, looking at and within the context of all the available capacity in the system, I mean, we knew always, Madam Chairman, that we would need to hook into municipal water. That's never changed. The sewer was a pivot, and it was, in general, those were the reasons why we made the change.
Thank you. Um. The state DEP, the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan, and the select board acting as water and sewer commissioners. Its policy states the first preference is for an onsite treatment facility to recharge the aquifer and decrease the amount of discharge being made into the ocean. If a property owner can document that onsite facility is not possible, connection to the municipal sewer may be considered. Are you in a position to provide detailed documentation why an onsite facility is not possible?
Well, Madam Chairman, I think we've spent the last four months talking about, or five months, talking about the onsite system. I'm not saying it would not be possible. That's a little bit subjective. But would it inherently create significantly additional challenges? And would it put us in a much different place exposure-wise? And would we need additional permits from the state that would be appealable? I can answer yes to all of those. Moreover, the zoning board, which has been so intimately interested in the amount of waivers that we've requested, we were able to eliminate a fair amount of those waivers by pivoting to the municipal system. Moreover, the municipal system has adequate capacity. And in the town's own comprehensive wastewater management plan, developed for the town by CDR McGuire, it clearly shows that there's ample capacity in the system far beyond what this development is anticipated to generate. So it was a whole confluence of factors. But I would say we've certainly demonstrated in no uncertain terms over the last many months that the municipal sewer provides many more benefits to the plan than trying to do an onsite system, which has a much greater impact on issues that are very, very near and dear to the hearts of many of the people that are participating in this whole process. So I think that is our position at this point in time.
So you sent us a letter requesting connection to the municipal system. Did not include any details. Can you explain what your plan is regarding how you will connect to the municipal sewer? Where are you going to connect in and how you would propose to cross Route 128?
Sure. If it pleases the board, Madam Chairman, I'm joined tonight by Carlton Quinn from Allen &amp; Major and David Formato from Onsite Engineering. They've been working with Mr. Dam and other people at the town, or I should say, conversating with them even before this application was filed with this board about the sewer system. So if it pleases the board, I'd like to turn the floor over to my technical experts to talk a little bit about how those connections would be made.
That would be great. Thank you.
Carlton, I saw you pop up.
Yep, there he is.
You're on mute, Carlton.
My name's Carlton Quinn, Civil engineer with Allen &amp; Major Associates, representing SLV. The wastewater would be collected onsite via a gravity system to the bottom of the hill. A pump system would be installed at the bottom of the hill to collect the wastewater. It would then be pumped down School Street to, I think it's, and I apologize if I forget the name of the street, a hidden ledge road where the existing sewer system for the town, that's the closest connection point for us. So that would be the system. Currently, the exact details of the whole system, I mean, it's not a complicated system. It's a sewer ejector pump that goes down. There would probably be directional drilling to be done underneath 128 along with the water. And then DOT permits would be required for that. And then the connection to the gravity system further down School Street.
Have you done any type of hydraulic capacity analysis with respect to the capacity of the existing pipes to handle the additional flow?
We have not done a capacity analysis. Typically, when we submit these type of applications, it will be reviewed by the town. The town will bring up areas where there are issues of capacity, and we would, you know, study those areas to see if there was any improvement to infrastructure required or address any comments that the town would have relative to capacity. You know, a full capacity analysis of the entire town of Manchester is not something that we would typically do.
Chuck Dam, can I call on you to give some comments?
Yeah, definitely. So Chuck Dam, DPW Director for Manchester by the Sea. So I guess I would just comment that, you know, we did receive this letter a month ago. We had had kind of more preliminary conversations probably over a year ago when they were before the Board of Selectmen for the LIP application. At that time, there was a lot of back and forth about whether or not it would be an onsite system or the sewer at that, the municipal sewer. At that time, we were still under consent order, so it was a little kind of ahead of schedule in terms of, you know, being able to say very forthright whether or not it would be possible. I guess I would agree that, you know, engineering-wise, it's certainly possible to, you know, connect to the municipal system. I think that capacity of the pipe going down School Street would certainly have to be analyzed at a minimum. You know, the way the sewer system is built out, obviously, the higher you get, or you know, the further away from the treatment plant, the smaller the pipes get. And so, you know, it certainly, you know, this amount of flow would need to be, you know, analyzed in our existing collection system. It does turn to gravity at the Hidden Ledge Road, but I believe it's a six-inch, at least some of the extents down to, you know, coming down School Street and to the plant. So that would certainly need to be looked at. As part of our previous II work, we have not lined the School Street pipe yet. So I think that would probably be, you know, with or without the availability of the existing capacity, I think we would want to line that piece of pipe. And it remains to be seen, I guess, the force main could be extended beyond Hidden Ledge to kind of take some of those considerations out. So there's definitely an engineering, you know, exercise that needs to be done still to say definitively where we would be connecting to the system. You know, so beyond that, I'll just say that, you know, we, you know, the capacity of the pipes are different than the capacity of the plant. You know, the, we haven't talked about it yet, but I'm sure it'll be a question later on is the design capacity of the plant, you know, is, I should say, the permitted capacity of the plant and our discharge available is 670,000 gallons per day. We are not, you know, with the II work that was mentioned previously that we have done, you know, the town has undertaken as part of the consent order and just, you know, due diligence on the collection system. Our current 12-day run, or 12-month rolling average, which is what the 670,000 per day is based on, you know, we're around 508,000 gallons, so we're under the 670 at this time. You know, that being said, there is a element of continuing our II work that will need to be undertaken. You know, II is infiltration inflow that impacts the collection system. That's why we are under consent order in the first place. You know, so from a DPW town collection system perspective, I would expect that we need to have further discussions on, you know, removing additional II as part of our townwide efforts, but also, you know, specific to this connection or potential connection in the future. So I think that's kind of answers most of the questions that have been brought up, but I'm happy to go into detail on any other questions for anybody.
Thank you. Um, I believe, I mean, we received an email, a memo from David for, you know, probably Richard, your name, on April 27th, who's a consultant for SLV School Street. Would you like to speak to that memo you sent us?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chairperson. Again, for the record, David Formato with Onsite Engineering, representing SLV for this project. And yes, essentially, the work that we were tasked with doing was, is working with Jeff to, you know, understand the current configuration of the town's collection system wastewater treatment facility and, you know, with the end goal of really understanding the amount of capacity and so on and so forth. And obviously, the best source of that information was the the very detailed comprehensive wastewater management plan that the town put together in 2016. As Jeffrey referenced, your consultant, CDR McGuire, did a complete analysis of, you know, the town soup to nuts. So we did read that report and felt that, you know, that information was very topical because as part of their analysis, they actually did look at and identify this section of School Street, the School Street north of Route 128, as as a potential target for sewer expansion. It was, you know, area number six in the report. So we looked at detail into that part of the report, understanding, you know, that how that relates to, you know, the project at hand. And, you know, essentially, what the town's consultants came to as a conclusion was that this area should actually have some of the available excess capacity. And, you know, as we just heard, that there is, there is about, you know, probably more than 100,000 gallons of excess existing capacity in the treatment facility that can be used to make new connections to the system. So there is that capacity. The CDR McGuire report, you know, had a range in there. And what they essentially said was that on the low end, this particular part of town should have about 60,000 gallons of sewer capacity at the plant reserved for development into this site. And that at a minimum, it should be 30,000 gallons. So between 60,000, 30,000 and 60,000 should be set aside of that excess capacity for sewer to this site. And further, that study actually identified when they evaluated whether this particular part of town was more applicable for onsite treatment with subsurface disposal or connection to the sewer system. You know, their analysis dictated that this area of town should be connected into the municipal sewer system primary as the primary means of wastewater disposal rather than subsurface disposal. So, you know, again, we went through that report and felt it was important to kind of compile all that stuff together in one place, which was essentially the genesis of the memo, you know, that way, because it's a pretty cumbersome report to read. So we thought it would be beneficial to everybody to kind of, you know, to boil it down to the stuff that's really only related to the potential, you know, SLV project that we have in front of us. So that's kind of along in the show of that. You know, obviously, happy to stick around and answer questions and discuss in more detail as needed.
Thank you. I'll now take questions. Questions, comments from the board. James Mitchell, do you have any questions or comments at this point in the meeting?
I don't. I would refer to the experts here. I do think on some level that it makes sense to have a, no longer have an onsite wastewater treatment plant due to the environmental concerns we've all discussed. But I would again want to see the additional information that is being requested. Thank you.
Thanks. Sean Zhang?
No, I don't have anything else at this moment, sir. Still kind of reviewing everything.
Okay. John?
Hi. Yeah, good evening. So I read in the narrative that that the estimate based on approximately 230 bedrooms at the project would result in about 25,000 gallons per day. So what's that estimate based off of? Because from what I understand, we don't really have a a flow analysis yet. And is that in the works? So I guess is this a good industry sort of estimate at this point in time?
I can answer that based on my experience, and then I'll let the technical expert answer it. But it's DEP prescribed, and it's a conservative estimate based on the number of bedrooms. So that's not an arbitrary number that we've assigned. It's established by DEP. And I would ask Carlton and also Beals and Thomas, it's my understanding that that's a very conservative estimate. So while it's, you know, we're targeting, call it 25,000 gallons per day maximum use, it's probably somewhere closer to the 15 to 21. So Carlton or Dave, feel free to add on to that.
Absolutely, Jeff. So yes, that 230 bedrooms, using a Title V number, which is a maximum day number, at 110 gallons per day per bedroom, that's where that 25,000 gallons per day is coming from. And Jeff is 100% right. That's a maximum day. The actual average day is 50 to 60% of that. So on a typical day, you're going to really actually only see about 15 to 16,000 gallons of, you know, wastewater being generated at the site that's going to be coming into the system.
Okay. And
Sorry, just to add on to that, it's industry standard to use that number for any sort of calculations. So it's used across the board on every project.
Understood.
Design.
All right. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, John.
No, I was just going to say that, you know, for a few months now, we talked about the design of the onsite system and there were, you know, many moments where we asked for more information and many times we didn't get much clarity. So I'm just wondering if this, the onsite system as part of the scope was fully examined before us, you know, switching over to this strategy. I understand that this strategy might have a more minimal impact on the surrounding environment, but I guess, what was the turning point? Was it just frustration in dealing with our questions? Or I just want to make sure that, you know, the onsite system was fully examined?
Yeah, of course. I mean, it's a good question. Madam Chair, can I answer that or?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
All right. I mean, it's a good question. But first of all, when we considered this initially and truthfully, we probably never would have considered an onsite system had the consent order not been in place. And when we were going through the LIP process with the Board of Selectmen, that was still very much hanging out there. And we did not want to come forward. And from all our information and sources, it was the expectation that that would be lifted as it was, but we didn't want to be so presumptuous to propose a new connection when that was still hanging out there. So with that said, we went forward. And at that time, when we went forward with the onsite system, that was still very much in place. So we've spent, and I've spent a ton of money vetting this onsite system with the expectation that, you know, it was the direction that we were going to go. Believe me, I wouldn't have, if that was not under consideration, we, all the plans reflected it. That's time and money. We had to do all sorts of testing for the leaching fields, et cetera, et cetera. So it'd be silly of me to go through that exercise and spend all that money if I hadn't thought that that was a viable consideration. Then, as I said earlier, it was a whole confluence of considerations that encouraged us to pivot to the municipal system. The large one being the consent decree being lifted, obviously, and the town having plenty of capacity. Obviously, there's still some work that needs to occur between we and the town relative to the eventual design. But considering that, and then considering the comparatively reduced impacts from an environmental standpoint, which we've spent so much time talking about, it honestly, it seems like a no-brainer. There's just too many reasons why it makes sense in comparison to the onsite system. So factoring all those, that's why we made the pivot.
Thank you. John, any more questions or thoughts?
I think I'm okay for now. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Brian?
No, John actually beat me to that one question as far as capacity and usage goes. The one question I do have, excuse me, is as Mr. Dam pointed out, the the infrastructure itself will have to be upgraded. Who observes these costs to upgrade the entire system to accept this project?
Madam Chair, should I take the first pass at that? And then I'm sure Mr. Dam and others can. I mean, obviously, the connection, there's no sewer from our site to the municipal system. So we have to undertake that cost. I forget the amount of linear feet, but it's not insignificant. And that's part of our financial burden to make the connection both for water and sewer. Then there's some additional analysis that will go on between we and the town relative to some of the pipe sizing and other things, Mr. Dam, you know, who's been so helpful in discussing with our team that need to occur in order for the system to adequately function to accommodate us. Obviously, it's our position, we're not going to upgrade, you know, the entirety of the system, nor do I think that's what the town would ask or things that have no, you know, relevance to where we're located. But, you know, as we advance the design of the system, we'll be working closely with Mr. Dam and his team, looking at the, you know, the constructability and the technical elements of how we make that connection. But most of the financial burden is very much ours.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Catherine?
Yeah, I think my only question is with respect to this 2016 report that I think everyone's relying on quite a bit, is whether it's, is it reasonable to rely on data from 2016? Is it still relevant? I don't know. Maybe our Public Works Director could answer that. I don't know how much these things change over time, so maybe it is reasonable. But, you know, that was a while ago, so I think it's worth asking.
Thank you. Mr. Dam, can you kind of explain what's been done since 2016 and how it's impacted the capacity of the plant?
All right, I can speak to that. Thank you. So the the CWMP, the 2016 report, so that was required as part of our consent order that was, we were under consent order starting in 2011, I believe. And so that was basically a five-year effort to go from the consent order requiring that we do a CWMP to issuing that final document. And I will say, you know, since then, we've actually, and I didn't have it on the website until this week apparently, but we did actually do a little bit of a supplement to that because just the way the nature of these projects in our consent order went, you know, obviously, they take years. And so, you know, even after we finished this report in 2016, before we were able to get the moratorium lifted and, you know, we still haven't quite got to the finish line on the consent order itself, you know, DEP actually required, you know, a supplemental, it's certainly not as involved as the initial report, but it is, you know, it still took some, you know, engineering time and effort. So that's something that we submitted that is now on the DPW portion of the website. And I can forward it to Sarah as well. But so anyway, that's just to say that, you know, these things are looked at periodically. You know, additional information is always, you know, coming in from different data points. We've done several, you know, II projects, whether it be lining pipe, lining manholes, or, you know, working with private property owners on some pump removal and, you know, so on and so forth. So I would say that in general, and the proof of, you know, kind of the fruits of all this labor are that our, you know, affluent flow at the plant is much lower than it was in 2011 and 2016. And, you know, we've seen significant reductions in the wet weather flow at the treatment plant. So, So um, you know, it just goes to show that we are, you know, kind of staying on top of it and making headway um, where we're able to entertain these types of connections. So um, yes, we look at it. Yes, the the data is good. Um, you know, a lot of the CWMP analysis isn't so much on the individual flows, but, you know, potential buildout. And so that was referred to um by one of the consultants. I don't see, it says DF on his name. I'm not sure. John, I think there Dave, sorry. Um, so anyway, um, you know, that there there was an analysis done uh in terms of you know, different areas of town for buildout and, you know, what that capacity would be um uh, if if we got to that point. So um, you know, I think this is certainly since the moratorium was lifted, but even in general, I'd say this is the first sort of um piece that's come before, at least my office, uh, looking to connect. There's other pockets of town like uh Raymond Street or Smith Point or uh, you know, towards the Beverly Line on Bid- Bridge Street um, where they, you know, those areas were also analyzed. Um, and so this, you know, that's just kind of where we are at this point. I think that answers the question, but
Mr. Dan, for benefit of the board and the public, can you explain what I and I is?
Sorry, so I and I is referred to, that's uh infiltration inflow. And so the II that um, you know, in that sense is we're looking at uh groundwater infiltrating into the sewer system pipes. Uh, we're looking at direct inflow, which could be uh illicit connections such as sump pumps where people have their basement, uh, you know. Uh, maybe it's an unfinished basement that gets wet, so they have a sump pump and they connect it to the sewer system. Uh, they could have roof leaders or, you know, roof drains or perimeter drains that are otherwise would be, you know, considered stormwater that are connected to the sewer system. And that takes up the excess capacity in the pipes and therefore, you know, we would be subject to overflows in the you know, in Manchester's case, we were really seeing, you know, the flows at the plant. So our ability to treat wastewater coming into the plant was compromised. Um, and so that's, you know, the idea is to, you know, get as much II out of the system as you can. Um, and that's what our projects, uh, you know, on the consent order were focused on, uh, which was um lining pipes or um lining manholes or replacing them if they had failed, things like that.
Thank you. Um, Jim Dietrich, do you have any questions?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I do. Uh, my first question is directed to um our DPW Director. My my um, we've ta- heard a lot about II tonight and I've lived in many parts of this country. And um, I would like to ask you, is connecting your sump pump or your um gutters, downspouts and gutters to the sewer system? Is that considered, and I'll use the term in quotation marks, illegal?
Uh, Mr. Dan?
Yeah, so uh, we, in my uh, you know, at my office, we don't use the word illegal, we use illicit. So it's more, it's not uh, it's it's certainly not allowed. Uh, and we would uh discourage people to do it. In some instances, I've worked on projects where um, you know, we have to institute bylaws. I believe we do have a bylaw on the book that prohibits it. Um, and so, you know, therefore, you know, not illegal but illicit. And um, you know, that's pretty, that's certainly common in Massachusetts and I think a lot of other uh areas of the country, but I couldn't say for sure.
Thank you, um, because that was, that's been my experience too. And I would also point out that having lived here now for thirteen years, there are a lot of things that go on that are not covered by the books, uh, but they do and we occasionally find out about them. My next remark, I'd like to direct to Jeffrey Engler. Uh, Mr. Engler, I want to compliment you for whatever reason you arrived at the decision to offer us an alternative to hooking up to the sewer system, assuming of course that the tests that have been mentioned earlier by Director Dan and um the state requirements uh come to come to pass, that seems to me a much better solution than what you originally proposed. And uh, so I will ask you, in your original budget, how much money did you have allocated for an onsite mud? And how much will you, will it cost you more or less to not have the onsite mud?
Mr. Engler?
Um, when you refer to mud, I presume you mean the wastewater treatment plant?
Correct. I I lived in Texas for a while. We called them muds because they were a constant source of trouble.
Well, I I can say this, um, the cost is greater for us to tie into the municipal system from a capital cost. Um, however, and any, any, you know, homeowner or developer could tell you or, you know, it's it's better to be in tied into a municipal system than have uh an onsite plant because an onsite plant inherently carries with it lots of operational considerations, lots of ongoing maintenance, not to say that we have zero maintenance, but it's significantly less. So, you know, we'll we'll have ongoing fees, just like anybody in Manchester that ties into um, you know, the municipal system presumably pays a fee. Um, but to tell, we we have a a long stretch of pipe that needs to be laid from our site to the municipal system, both for water and sewer. And that is not an insignificant cost. So our capital cost to do that and then, you know, whatever um uh upgrades are identified uh specific to this project, I can tell you is uh significantly in excess of our onsite system. But there are candidly operational benefits moving forward that uh a municipal system. I mean, people that are on private septic systems know that they have to get them cleaned out and they fail every twenty or twenty-five years. And there's other things, whereas tying into municipal system is not without any risk, but comparatively much less. So hopefully that helps to answer your question.
Assuming the uh cost factor you're referring to is the thirteen hundred plus dollars per bedroom that the town requires a homeowner to pay to connect to the sewer system.
Uh, well, that's an ongoing co- well, that's a one-time cost. And then there's presumably annual costs, you know, to use it. So the, once again, those are ongoing. But, you know, we would have, if we had an onsite plant uh, based on a DEP issued permit, there's all sorts of quarterly maintenance and treatment. And we have the, you know, treatment facility uh that we, and so we carry all of that in our annual, in our operating budget. So it's a very different model than just tying into the municipal system. So yeah, there's there's cap one-time costs of creating the infrastructure. There's a ti- a hook give fee, hookup fee or what have you. And then there's, you know, ongoing operational costs to have the right to use the sewer system, just like anybody in town that lives in a house that ties into the system. They pay some fee on an annual basis to the to the town of Manchester by the sea.
Hold on, Jim, just a second. Let me ask, um, Chuck Dan, has his hand raised? He might have some clarifying, a clarifying point.
Thank you, yes. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify, so a couple of things. One is the, right now, the current bedroom uh hookup fee that, you know, any other resident would have when they do a new construction or addition is sixteen fifty per bedroom. So I assume that that would be part of uh, you know, the the hookup fee as Mr. Engler called it. Um, so I I would be looking to make sure that that was included because that does go directly into the uh revolving fund for the Sewer System Enterprise Fund. Uh, and then I guess beyond that, we do have the, uh, you know, like, uh, we had talked about the capacity analysis and, you know, potentially uh II projects that would, you know, basically facilitate or allow the connection to be made without inundating the system somewhere else. Um, so I think that's kind of still to be determined. Um, so I'm not sure how the board would handle that or, you know, what conditions would be required. Um, and then I I guess the the other thing would be uh, as as is discussed, I guess there will be a um pump station that will be pumping uh the wastewater from the site to the municipal system. Uh, presumably that would have some sort of meter on it or um, you know, some other arrangement for measuring the flow. And our sewer rates would be based on um, you know, that that flow measured at that meter. Um, so that, that's how I would envision uh this connection be be made and how it would be billed quarterly, you know, uh, going forward. You know, should we get there? Um, and then I I guess we're probably not there yet, but I have, you know, similar thoughts about the water system. Um, if if we're going with a booster pump station for the for the water system. So I'm not sure when that would be discussed, but that's other things that are on my mind as we, as this kind of gets vetted further.
So that connection fee is roughly, you know, three hundred and seventy thousand, give or take, based on sixteen fifty uh, per bedroom. You know, because that's on the books and what's charged of any development, how, single-family house, multi-family or otherwise, that's you know, that is what it is. We're not looking for any relief from that.
I had to pay it. Uh, um, Jim, did you have another question?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
This is a subject that um, having lived in many parts of the country, I have intense interest in. Mr. Dan, um, since you brought it up, right now residents of Manchester pay a fee for based on the amount of water we use, our sewage fee is determined by the amount of water that we use. If this project hooks up to the town water system, why do we need a meter to um to meter what's coming out of the lift pump? Since we know how much water is being consumed, we can therefore assume that, as you do with all the other residents, that there is an appropriate amount of that water going back to the sewer system.
Mr. Dan?
So that's true in your house because you turn on the faucet and it goes directly down the drain. But in this case, we will have a pump station going up the driveway to the building and whatever uses are on the building and then coming down the hill in the collection system, which will also be subject to its own II issues. So I would rather get paid based on the amount coming out of the wastewater station rather than what's going up the hill.
I don't quite understand your answer, but I'll let that pass for a moment. It seems to me that by putting in a pumping station, we're putting in a po- potential point of failure. Why not just hook up to the sewer system? And why not ex- simply extend the sewer system to accommodate SLV?
Uh, well, no matter what, you're in for pumping. There's zero chance that you'll get to the existing gravity system via gravity um, from their site. Um, it's true that they'll be able to use the elevation to their advantage to, you know, use gravity going down to School Street. But from there, they're gonna have to um put a pump station somewhere, whether it's on their property or town property or elsewhere. Um, it'll require a pump station.
So the pump station is a requirement, a town requirement, really, it's not connected to SLV?
Well, as they say, you can't make it flow uphill. So I don't, unless they've figured that out, then uh um, there there, it's not a town requirement. If they can get it to gravity, God bless them, but I don't think they'll be able to.
Well, last night at, or Monday night at town meeting, um, one of the warrants that was considered and passed was the consideration to uh for additional development and limit limited can a limited commercial district, which will encompass the area up around the MAC. I would assume that if we extend extended our sewer system out there, it would also accommodate this additional development.
Uh, Jim, I I think that that is not appropriate for tonight because there's been no applications submitted with respect to any development at the MAC.
Let me rephrase, can I rephrase my question? May I rephrase my question, Madam Chairman?
Okay.
Assuming if we were to have additional uses out there in the future, uh, we would probably still need a pump station to accommodate removing the sewage from that general location to um move it to a point closer to where the existing piping is. Am I correct?
So yes, except that we, so that would be in the in that scenario, the the town would own a pump station. And, you know, we we do own other pump stations, but I'm not looking to own more if I don't have to. So I would rather uh this developer, uh, you know, get their system in however they've designed it or, you know, we'll review it. But I I don't anticipate that it would be, you know, I I guess that without another person to partake in that effort, it seems like they would need to um, you know, maybe maybe a future development up there would, you know, contact SLV or, you know, the future, um, you know, person there and see if they have capacity so that they could do their own kind of private system. And then we would still, the town would bill uh based on whatever comes out of that pump station and, you know, get sent to the collection system further down. Uh, but like I said, at at this point in time, I don't know that that's in the town's best interest to
I don't wanna get into the weeds in this. I think that if a second developer comes along then their situation would be looked at separately. It would have nothing to do with SLV.
I'll hold the rest of my questions till later. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, Sean, you had raised your hand again.
Yes, Sarah, um, just something that I was trying to, this was kind of for Chuck Dan. How how often do we reach capacity or exceed capacity in a year?
So currently, I assume you're talking about the affluent discharge of the wastewater facility. So, you know, the, that's different than the capacity of the system or this, um, you know, the treatment plant itself. But so the the permitted flow, as we've said, is six hundred and seventy thousand gallons based on a rolling twelve-month average. So certainly there's wetter times of the year where we're, you're never gonna have zero II. You will, you know, occasionally have more. Uh, we do, uh, we have in the past on a monthly basis gone over the six hundred and seventy thousand gallon threshold. However, we have not gone over it on a twelve-month rolling average, which is what we are held to in our permit. Um, and that's, you know, there's, our our most recent permit was issued, as was said, in twenty twenty. Prior to twenty twenty, our old permit uh had both conditions for wet weather flow and dry weather flow. And the revised permit, the new permit that we're currently under for twenty twenty, they did away with the wet and dry weather and just hold us to a twelve-month rolling average. So presumably, if you had, say, wet July, like we did last year, we had over a foot of rain, you know, you might ha- you might go above your six hundred and seventy thousand gallon per day threshold. However, um, you know, on a twelve-month rolling average basis, we have not. And so that's what we're at right now and that's what we are held to based on our permit.
Now, now, based on that, if we if we see our capacity, what are we still within safe limits of operating or are we at that point beyond?
Um, so, you know, we we definitely keep a close eye on it. It's not something we take for granted. Um, there certainly has been cases, um, you know, we're a tidal coastal community. So we've had, uh, you know, on a, it's it's very clear when we have a saltwater intrusion. So we we had that before. That's why we did the Harbor Loop Project a couple of years ago. And so you see, you know, significant spikes if it's, you know, on a um, you know, twice a day basis of the tides. Uh, if we have uh saltwater intrusion like that. Uh, we also see uh saline water in our treatment process, which we do not want and which causes issues in the treatment project process itself. Um, however, we we have not, uh, you know, had any of those issues in the recent past. Um, and that's, you know, so that's how we know we're doing a good job. And if we were to um, you know, go over for a prolonged period of time, like I said, we we have gone over uh, the six hundred and seventy thousand, just not for months at a time and not for a consistent period of time that puts us in jeopardy of exceeding our twelve-month rolling average.
Yeah. Has this, has this changed from year to year? I mean, as far as the number of times that this has happened, have we seen increasing more?
Uh, I'd have to look back at the data. I I don't know off the top of my head. I know, um, you know, we, as recently as February, we had a, we were, we were over. Um, you know, in calendar year twenty twenty-one, we probably had a couple instances where we were over. But if you look at the twelve-month rolling average going all the way back to our ACO, I mean, you can see the trends are, you know, clearly down, not up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you good, Jasan?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Um, Brian, you have your hand raised for the
Uh, just a quick question. Uh, I wanna confirm that the pumping station, uh, all maintenance will be, uh, any class associated to the day-to-day operation, uh, failure in the pump station. That becomes the uh uh, re- uh responsibility of the applicant. I just wanna confirm that.
Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, John, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I just had a quick
Yeah, I just had a quick question for Mr. Damn when we were talking about, um, capacity. So is it safe to say that? In twenty twenty five, when we were, uh, negotiate a new contract with the state for a an updated permit. Is it safe to say, uh, assume that they're gonna, um, allow for, um. A higher capacity than the six hundred and seventy thousand, uh, gallons per day that we currently have under our existing permit? And do they take into account, um, projects that are, uh, in progress or under construction or? Or, um, you know, anticipated, uh. Within that that next timeframe of five years. Thank you.
Mr. Damn?
Sure, so, um, I wish it was a negotiation, but it's not. They issue the permit and we follow the permit. And, uh, so that's that's what that's how it will happen. Uh, I have no reason to believe that they would increase our permit above six hundred and seventy thousand gallons. I think it'll be. Six hundred and seventy thousand gallons till, you know, I'm long gone. But, uh, and I don't foresee them lowering it either, so it's not like they would. Say, you know, you're you've been at six seventy since the treatment plant's been in existence, and now we're gonna make it five hundred and seventy or. Something like that. That's not typically how it works. I think we will consistently have six hundred and seventy going forward. Uh, to the point where we do something much, much more drastic where, you know, say. You know, fifty years from now, if the treatment plant's underwater or something like that, you know, that then, you know, all bets are off at that point, but. Um, feel for the foreseeable future, it's gonna be six hundred and seventy thousand.
I I see, so it's like a fixed amount every five years and they don't really take into account new growth.
Uh, no.
Like that, okay.
No, certainly you could you could make the argument and, you know, try and get your permit amended, but it's very unlikely.
Understood, thank you.
Um, Jim?
Uh, following up on John's question, which was a very appropriate one, uh, Mr. Damn. Is that six hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day? Based on the capacity of the physical plant that exists there today?
Mr. Damn?
No, um, so the six hundred and seventy is. More or less an arbitrary number, the the actual throughput of the plant is much higher because we do see, you know, numbers. Coming into the plan much higher and we don't, we don't get the ability to just say. We're only gonna treat six hundred and seventy thousand gallons and then the rest goes into the harbor. We have to treat for the, you know, worst case scenario, and so there's certain, you know, safety factors that are in that.
Follow up question, what is the capacity? Worst case of the existing plant?
Uh, so it's one point two million gallons per day, I believe.
So it's roughly forty thirty percent higher than. So than the number you're throwing around?
Almost twice.
Almost a hundred, I mean.
Almost a hundred, okay.
And that's just, you know, that's based on probably the lowest, um. You know, the lowest capacity item. I mean, there's lots of different treatment processes. Um, in under other circumstances, I would offer you guys the tour, uh, and you could see for yourselves. Um, but yeah, we we can, and that's like a sustained flow, like there, you know, there's a a million different numbers that, you know, we have to worry about. Um, so that's a sustained flow treatment throughput for a day. Um, you know, the peaking, you know, if we get a, you know. A very intense rainfall and our numbers go up, you know, there there's no stopping that water, that flow coming down the pipe. Um, so we have to handle it onsite. We can't, we can't bypass.
I asked that question only because, uh, we've heard a lot of numbers. And it would be reasonable to assume for individuals who may not have as much knowledge that you have. That. If we were to, um. Do this and then down the road, we would run out of capacity for our current plant. That doesn't seem to be an issue, and from what I understand from reading some of the literature. That the technology on sewage treatment is constantly evolving. And plants are becoming, um, being able to handle more throughput. Um. Where the restrictions are, uh, the the technology is getting better for treating this. And we're we're growing, so is am I reasonable in that account?
Mr. Damn?
Uh, certainly the technology is, you know, evolving and, you know, we we are constantly working on it. I would say the the biggest. Uh, contributing factor to our ability to add new connections or to extend the sewer system. Is the aggressiveness which we go after, the I I that exists in the collection system.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Thanks, um, Mr. Mitchell.
I guess, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of observations here. One of the things I found surprising in the discussions tonight. Was that if the developer chooses to or is allowed to connect to the municipal system, it's gonna cost him more money. Um, my assumption that the onsite plant would, you know, there'd be some savings here for him, so. That was kind of a surprising revelation to me. The other thing, and I don't think it should be lost in this conversation. If we go back to the architectural, uh, review, the peer review and the applicant's response to that review. By eliminating the onsite treatment plant, one of the other concerns is that there was not enough outdoor space and play area. And by eliminating the onsite plant, he's able to add additional play space. Open space, and they've actually talked about a nature themed play area. So there's multiple benefits here, and I just wanted to, um, make those observations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Damn?
Sorry, I just have to comment on one thing, uh, the in the costs, uh, analysis here. Um, you know, it it is, I I have no idea if it's more expensive or less expensive, but I will say that. By virtue of having to install the water pipe up the road. And being able to basically mobilize one contractor to do both. I don't know that it's, you know, exorbitantly more expensive to add the sewer line. Or that, you know, the additional force main, so I think that needs to be said. I don't think it's totally, uh, exorbitant, you know. I'll leave it at that.
Well, uh, Madam Chair, can I comment on that?
Mr. Engler?
Yeah, I think Mr. Dan's correct in that are there efficiencies in doing both together a hundred percent? I mean, would be installing the pipe at the same time, opening the road at the same time. So there's still efficiencies without question, but we're talking about, you know, millions of dollars to run. To to do all that construction, to put all the infrastructure in the ground. It it's not insignificant, um, and I would just go back. Operationally, those that have been involved with onsite treatment plants and. Uh, Mr. Formato, who's on our team, could comment. And we're doing dealing with this in situ it right now, because we have an onsite plant there. It is a very onerous process with D E P relative to the maintenance and treatment. And all sorts of other responsibilities that are ongoing. So, you know, financially. It it's not hugely better, but from a an operational standpoint, a management standpoint, an ongoing property management. It's it's just simpler to have a tie into the municipal system. Uh, you know, I go back to somebody owning a single family house. It's better to be on sewer than it is to have a a septic tank. And all those other headaches that can come with it or fail or whatever, so. Um, you know, so that that's, I I mean, and the financials were. Honestly, it was a consideration, but but way down the list is as as the member said. Um, there's all sorts of site planning. Features that have been enhanced because we had to lose, we because we were able to lose all the onsite treatment plan infrastructure. And also some of the setbacks and the like to the resource areas in several places improved. Um, so there were, there were, it's, there were lots of reasons to pivot. I I don't need to. You know, beat the drum anymore. I I I hope I've done a good job of explaining that.
Thank you. Um. Mr. Dietrich and Mr. Mitchell, can you take your hands down if you finish, please?
Of course.
Thank you. Um.
Oh, there it is.
I'll, I'll now, um, go to the general public and I will start with, um. Dan Hill, who sent us. Um, on behalf of M E C T, sent us a letter with some thoughts and comments. Mr. Hill, would you like to give us a brief overview of what you sent us?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, and and for the record, uh, Dan Hill and I represent the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. Um, I I think there there's been a lot of, uh, I think fruitful conversation this evening. I think several points, however, have been missed. Uh, so I'll try to hit on those, um, and and the general theme that I'm seeing here is that. You know, we we're concerned that we're basically just transferring in a ver- an environmental problem. From one location to another, um, I I don't. I I think we're all open minded to see how this could work, but it hasn't been proven. And and it it's a little troubling that there is no details on the construction of the sewer of the sewer line. There's no hydraulic capacity analysis, uh, and there's no, uh, pollutant loading analysis. Uh, that should be peer reviewed by the board during this public hearing and and we're already five months into the hearing and and we have this pivot. Um, so I do want to briefly address those points, if I may, so just, um. I think from just starting with some background. Uh, it was discussed that there's a N I P T S permit and in a groundwater and in a, um, a discharge permit. Um, those are jointly issued by E P A and D E P. These are federal and state statutes and, um, the most recent N I P T S permit was issued in twenty twenty, so that that all was was discussed. What was not mentioned is that there's an additional, uh, third layer of regulatory review for for an outfall pipe. And that's under the State Ocean Sanctuaries Act. Uh, that that law, it's a state statute. It prohibits, uh, wastewater outfall pipes along most of the Massachusetts coastline. And but it exempts pipes that were in existence at the time of the enactment of the statute, and that includes Manchester's. Um, it includes a few more, uh, Gloucester as well, I believe. Um, that statute. Uh, does not, however, allow for increases of flow through those pipes. Uh, unless they're approved by the state under under a rigorous review process and subject to rigorous. Performance standards and conditions, including, uh, compliance with, uh, concentration limits, uh, that are set by what's called a T M D L. Uh, this, this area, this geographic area Salem Sound. Is is the subject of a T M D L, uh, for pathogens. And though that that was specifically referenced actually in the in the N I P T S permit. Um, so it it is critical that this this project, this connection, the sewer connection be evaluated for. Both the concentrations of pollutant flow going to the to the treatment plant and eventually out the outfall pipe and eight thousand. Uh, feet into the harbor, uh, as well as the flow capacity, the flow rate. Um, I don't view, I don't read the Ocean Sanctuary Act as allowing for an increase like this without any review. Um, I I I think there's an assumption that the the Ocean Sanctuary Act permit allows. Any increase of flow up to six hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day. Um, I I don't believe that's correct, and I don't I don't think that's consistent with the intent of the statute, so that I think that's something the board should should inquire about. Uh, and and we can provide perhaps some more analysis on that later. Um. With respect to the capacity, I Chuck Damn had mentioned in in his memo on March thirtieth that there should be a hydraulic capacity analysis. And and we couldn't agree more. I I I think, you know, there there doesn't seem to be. Um. Any any agreement from the developer to do this and and the, there seems to be frankly, a a a blind deference to the C W M P. The C W M P did not do a hydraulic capacity analysis. The study area that was referred to, uh, just simply took. The projected flow from that geographic area, study area six, and said, look, that's gonna be sixty thousand gallons per day. The treatment plant can handle sixty thousand gallons per day. That's all that that study did. It didn't evaluate whether the pipes that are downstream. Of that area have the capacity to take any additional flow. Um, that is fundamental design work for any extension of a sewer system. Um. Any extension of a sewer system in Massachusetts is regulated by the State Clean Clean Water Act regulations, and I cited those provision provisions in my letter. This requires a design that complies with this manual called T R sixteen. Um, Mr. Engler and his team are are quite familiar with this because they had to do this. In their project in Winchester, which we've heard about previously in this hearing. So that should happen now, um, this 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 sewer extension should be designed in accordance with T R sixteen. And that includes a hydraulic capacity analysis. Which includes peak flows, not just the average daily flows, but the peak flows, which is the flows times four. To ensure that the pipes, not just the plant, but the pipes. Have the ability to take this flow and deliver the flow down to this treatment plant at at the base of the harbor. Um, so we recommend tonight that the board ask the applicant to produce the hydraulic capacity analysis. Uh, for peer review by the town's wastewater engineers. Uh, those are the folks with the expertise, and I believe it's Tada and Howard. Uh, they should be doing that, uh, as part of this public hearing process. Likewise, there should be a water capacity analysis that we asked, we asked for this back in February. Uh, that hasn't been provided yet, so there should be both a wastewater and a water capacity analysis and then peer reviewed by Tada and Howard. Now, you might hear comments from the applicant or from others that this can be subject to a condition. Don't don't worry, board, we we'll take care of it. You know, you you can trust us and and we'll we'll get this done right, and then you can have your D P W director look at it after the permit's been issued. That doesn't fly. Under chapter forty B, you cannot delegate or defer a decision that's discretionary like this. To a other to another board or official after the hearings closed. There's plenty of case law that I can cite and and that supports that argument. So this this process, this review process has to happen during this public hearing. Now, the good news is you still have several months. Uh, but thi- this really should happen because it's a very important. Uh, concern that you've never had such a huge expansion of your sewer system, I don't think. Uh, in in recent times, I mean, you you you've been under a consent decree for since twenty thirteen, and before that, there was one in nineteen ninety two. Um, so that that's the biggest message I want to send home tonight. Um. I think that this this, uh, is potentially a a positive move. But we are still have big reservations about capacity and about the pollutants that are gonna be going into the Manchester Bay.
Thank you. Mr. Legere?
You're on mute.
Apologies, sorry, I lowered my hand and forgot to unmute myself. Thank you, Madam Chair, Luke Legere, McGregor Legere and Stevens on behalf of the Citizens Initiative for Manchester Affordable Housing. Uh, we would echo everything really that Attorney Hill just just said. Um, and I think a lot of his comments really did flow right along with and and sort of follow and touch on. The comments that the board has received from the select board, uh, wearing their hat as the sewer commissioners, and and they have certainly. Expressed a very clear preference for onsite systems wherever possible. Um, and have essentially asked for more information, uh, that the board receive more information to be able to properly vet. Uh, this proposal to connect to the municipal sewer and and make sure that that is in fact actually the the best course. And the most appropriate course here, uh, certainly, I think at a bare minimum. Uh, Mr. Hill's correct that the board should be asking for a capacity analysis. Um, and for more information through detailed plans. To really give you a clear picture on the construction and infrastructure impacts and requirements that this connection would require. Um, what we're talking about here could have significant impacts to the town. Um, this could implicate the town's ability to be able to comply with state and federal law, allowing for this connection. Um, certainly, there may be costs to the town. We heard Mr. Engler say that most of the costs associated with this extension. Would be borne by the applicant, uh, but not all. And I think it's very important for the board and the town to understand what exactly the costs will be in total. And what the cost to the town may ultimately be. Uh, and those could come in a number of different forms. Those could come in requirements for more I N I, which we've heard a a good deal about here tonight. Um, they could come with, uh, you know, o- other potential, uh, infrastructure or construction costs. So all of these things are certainly very important for the town to consider and to look at and for the board to really be able to vet. And at the moment, I just don't believe you have before you sufficient information to allow you to do that. Um, and I would certainly agree with Mr. Hill that a lot of what we're talking about here should be looked at by a peer review consultant. To who could advise the board because much of this is, um, just. Something that needs to be looked at by an engineer or expert consultant, so I I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Badna Turner?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am maybe just, in all the discussion, I missed out on some critical details from my point of view. What I heard is gravity will flow downhill with all the wastewater. And then it will go into a pipe. And then it will hook up to Hidden Ledge Road. And in between there, there'll be a pump. What I didn't get was how do you cross 128? And as importantly as how you cross 128, who's responsible for repairs to this connection, this pipe? After the development is built? If it's approved? And to what point? To the point where it connects to Inlet Road? Or so everything prior to that, all the way back to the site, is the responsibility of the developer, which I think is should be the case? Secondly, this requires permits to cross state land, town land. I'm concerned about crossing private lands as well. Because that can't happen. So the sketch, you know, I could do a sketch on a napkin of a pipeline. But I would like to have a really clear idea of where this pipe is destined to be. What the engineering drawings say. This is the pipe. This is where it goes, comes down the hill here. It goes across 128 here. And what are the permitting costs of getting across 128?
Thank you.
And I'm asking that as one of the sewer commissioners.
Mr. Angler? Or your consultant? Could you just re-explain how you plan to cross Route 128?
Carl, do you want to take that or?
Yep. Carl Quinn Allen, Major Sludges. Yeah, so our plan is to use the public right away. And we will be, will be most likely directional drilling under 128 for both the water and the sewer. Jeff would be responsible for all the upkeep of that all the way down to where it looks into the municipal system. And I'm sure the DPW would make him sign an agreement to that fact. This isn't the only pump station in town that pumps down the street. I think there's one on Mill Street, too, that's a private pump station that pumps down to the gravity in the public way. I don't know if there's any others, but I do know there is one. So this is done. And it's done all the time. When you directionally drill, you put in a bigger pipe than you need. You feed the pipe through. If there was a break, you pull the pipe out, replace it. Sometimes you put in two pipes to make it redundant. Basically required on what the DEP and the DOT would require us to do at that point because it's in their jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Yes, Ms. Leger?
Hi, good evening. I just, you were probably going to get to it. But can we get some type of commitment about peer review of this proposal when it comes?
I'd like to do that later when we get to the requirements.
Great, thank you.
I have a few more hands raised than I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Ann Harrison?
Madam Chairman, thank you. Um. When, in your opening remarks, you mentioned that at least the state and the sewer and water commissioners have expressed the opinion that an onsite system is preferred because it recharges the aquifer. And I have heard not a single mention of that. Is there someone who could speak to the desirability of recharging the aquifer? Thank you.
Thank you. I think that we will be asking the applicant to provide us information in that respect. Mr. Dam?
Thank you, I just wanted to mention, so the town does own and operate three pump stations. The one that was described at Mill Street, that's actually a private system as well. We do not own that one. It's a small residential system. So this would be much different than anything that we currently own or operate. And, you know, that's why I would hope, it seems like that's the way it was going. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that the town take over ownership or O and M or anything along those lines. And I certainly expect that it would be the responsibility of the applicant and the, you know, future operators.
Thank you. Mr. Badna Turner, do you have a follow up?
I do have a follow up. It's been referred to that sewer commission has a preference for onsite systems. Actually, this is something that is a policy of the sewer commission that before a connection can be established with the sewer system, that we need to know why it's not feasible to do an onsite system, as Ms. Harrison suggested, that refreshes the aquifer. That's the goal of this policy, but it's a policy. It's not a preference.
Madam Chair, if I may, we're not, we're not going to provide any. We've been at this for a year. I mean, I think this board, as well as I know, all the benefits that come from pivoting to municipal sewer. I mean, so we're not going to go through a list of why we're doing this or why we're not doing an onsite plant. I mean, the Mr. Hill and Mr. Leger and their constituents, and to a lesser degree, this board has communicated strongly its positions about environmental considerations, about the need for more open space, about all sorts of other things, about the need for flexibility, for greater site planning. This pivot allows for all that. We're not going back to an onsite plant under any circumstance. So I just want that to be clear.
Thank you, Mr. Angler. I think that the board is in a very difficult position at this point in time. An application was submitted with an onsite system and lots of waivers. You've asked to connect to the municipal sewer. You don't have to grant that waiver. So it is important.
It's not a waiver. What's a waiver?
To be able to connect to the municipal system, sewer system.
That's not a waiver.
It was on your list.
If I build a house in Manchester by the sea, do I have to get approval to tie into the municipal system?
Yes.
Sarah, I just want to remind you two to bring you back as the captain of the ship. You have not been allowing that back and forth. But let me finish. You have not been allowing that back and forth. When you make a comment or ask a question of the applicant, he can respond to it. But he shouldn't be getting into a dialogue back and forth with the above these issues. And I just want to clarify my position on this. Absolutely, it's not in the sewer district. So he has to get relief from the board for this as a preliminary matter. Whether or not going to town sewer makes sense or not, he's going to have to make that case about why the board may grant that relief of being outside the sewer district and being able to connect. So it would behoove the applicant to specify what benefits allegedly the town is getting from a site perspective about shifting away from the onsite treatment plant to going to town sewer. Then after that threshold issue is addressed and the board will determine whether or not there's sufficient evidence on that to grant that requested relief. Then there's going to have to be details about what the plan is to connect to town sewer. And there's going to need to be a detailed review and analysis of that and comment back to the board. Because ultimately, you'll be both deciding whether to grant that relief. And if so, how you condition that relief to allow the connection. So that would be the way I would break it down. I just respectfully intervened because the meeting has been going very smoothly without, you know, the back and forth. So I just wanted to remind the applicant that, you know, he's been doing a great job on that about responding in an appropriate way. But you don't want to get into that thing of back and forth again. So thank you.
May I respond? And I won't, there would be no back and forth, I promise.
Yeah.
So.
Hasn't been asked a question.
With regards to the, which I'll beat the board to the punch. Tatum and Howard is doing an analysis of the water and the water system. If it is probably efficient to have, and if it pleases the board, we would agree to having them expand that analysis to do a sewer capacity analysis. Mr. Dam is familiar with that work. I think we probably, I think they're ready to get going on the water analysis. But we probably can expand that to have them look at the sewer capacity as well and do that in short order. So we would be comfortable agreeing to that. I forget the other point that I was going to make, but couldn't have been that important.
Thank you. Mr. Formato?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, again, David Formato, Onsite Engineering. I just wanted to kind of circle back on a couple of points. First off, on the, the idea of, you know, groundwater aquifer recharge, while it's critically important, I think it's not, it's important to not lose sight of the fact that the CWMP process that the town engaged in and worked with the state on, that's actually a big focal point. So I think if you look at that report, for all the potential expansions or increases in sewer for parcels such as this that are undeveloped, they typically looked at one of two options. One being connection into the sewer system and the other being some sort of onsite treatment. And in particular, this particular part of town was actually flagged as being primarily connected to the sewer system as the means for wastewater disposal, you know, if and when development occurred over here. And it's important to understand that that recommendation was vetted and then also presented to the state. So the DEP reviewed that wastewater plan in detail and approved it. And that approval is no in large part tied to things like that. So obviously, it's in the engineer's mind and also the state's mind. It's appropriate to connect this part of town to the sewer system, you know, again, when development happens. The second thing, I think it's also important to note that, you know, Mr. Hill had mentioned, you know, the the outfall permitting as part of the wastewater plant and talked about, you know, getting into analysis of flows and loads and pollutants and that type of stuff and expanding flow. That's actually not what we're talking about here. The existing facility is permitted for 670,000 gallons per day on a 12-month rolling average. And that also comes with a whole host of concentration limits, mass balance limits that tie into that TDM, TMDL study, which is a total daily maximum load. So that's really the analysis that tells you this is what that water body that you just charged you to can safely have, go into it without degrading water quality. So those parameters are set in the current permit. So we're not talking about changing that permit. We're not talking about providing wastewater to the facility that's going to actually have any changes at all to the actual discharge in terms of both volume and quality. Those parameters are going to be the same post-development because as, you know, Mr. Dam mentioned, they are required to meet those. So if we were talking about expanding the facility or looking to actually increase that volume of water or put in more pollutants, that's when you get into that conversation. So the existing capacity, it hasn't been fully connected to the system yet. So as those connections come into play, eventually you will get to that limit. And then at that point, as, you know, Mr. Dam mentioned, you're going to have to either look at expanding the plant or maybe actually doing sewer somewhere else or, you know, systems that don't actually go into the, you know, the treatment facility. You know, if there was a need to actually go beyond what that current permitting capacity is. But I think those are very important points to understand that this development isn't going to impact that. And then the last point is relative to sewer capacity. While that analysis is critically important and as Mr. Angler mentioned, that's certainly something that should be done. Because in this unique situation, where the flow from the site is going to be connected into a pump station and then pumped into the collection system, the rate at which it comes into the existing system is defined by the pump station. And so you're really looking at the capacity of the sewer system relative to that rate. That rate is settable by design. So you can make it 200 gallons a minute, 100 gallons a minute, 70 gallons a minute, whatever the system has capacity for, you can target that with your flow so that we don't need to look at that four times the average day in terms of coming into the collection system because it's being pumped through a closed pipe. So those are some points that I think are important to kind of get into the record and help people understand, you know, kind of what we're talking about relative to the technical aspects of this.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Hill, you have your hand raised, but I'm not going to recognize you on this. I do not want a back and forth regarding permitting. That's outside the board's responsibility and that will be, have to be included in the design provided to us.
Okay. I actually have a question on the water capacity that Mr. Angler referenced.
Okay.
Mr. Angler mentioned that Tatum and Howard was already engaged to do a water capacity analysis. And I'm just wondering how that, how that became to be? Because I, I don't even think the board has any details on the water, proposed water extension. So I'm just curious, like, what, when did that happen? And what's the timetable for, for the board to receive the information back from DPW or from Tatum and Howard?
I will be asking that question at the appropriate time. Thank you. So we've heard from the public. We've received a lot of information tonight. And I think it's clear that we need additional information in order to make a decision whether to allow the connection to the municipal sewer system and even the municipal water system. So my suggestion is, is that we request a detailed report on why the onsite, an onsite system is less favorable than connection to the municipal system. I would also like to see a detailed plan of how you intend to connect the municipal system, including an engineering plan showing where you're going to cross 128. The hydraulic capacity analysis of the existing collection system to determine what existing piping might need to be replaced to handle the increased flow and make it available for a peer review by the town's wastewater engineering. And I would like the same thing with respect to connection to the water system, where there is a hydraulic capacity analysis of the existing distribution system and whether the existing pipes are sufficient. Is that acceptable, Mr. Angler?
Not, Madam Chairman, not in its entirety. I mean, I need to talk to my team some of that. I would ask that the board put that in writing. And I'll talk to my team about it. I don't know that we're going to be providing all of that. But at a minimum, you know, we can provide also under 40B, it's schematic plans. It's not detailed construction level documents. We can have our team put together a little bit more detail relative to the water and sewer connections that we're proposing. And certainly, I think in some manner, we've already provided all the reasons why this plan is better than the onsite plan. But we can do that in a more consolidated memo or letter to the board. But if you could put that in writing, we'll respond. But if you could put that in writing, we'll respond relative to what we can and can't do.
I will take exception to the fact that you do not want to provide us with detailed plans. We're gonna want to have detailed plans that are signed off by the DPW prior to approving any comprehensive permit because there's so much difference in the project based on whether you connect to the municipal sewer or you do an onsite sewer. We cannot leave that to a point in time after we issue the comprehensive permit. It's just not reasonable.
That, Madam Chair. With all due respect, we'd never provide that on any project. We're not gonna design this entire system prior to the public hearing closing. We're just, we're not gonna do it. We'd never do it. Can we provide enough information that Mr. Dan and Tatum Howard and others that understand this can make a logical and reasonable conclusion that the system will work, that the connections will work? Yes, we will do that. And then we will design the full system as part of our construction document process that once again will then be reviewed by Mr. Dan and his whole team and Tatum Howard on a more detailed level to confirm that it's consistent with what we've previously shown. That's how it works on pretty much every 40B. So I don't think Manchester by the Sea should feel slighted that some of these details are not being provided. They're just not provided at this juncture. Will they be provided? Absolutely. So whether you take exception to that or not, I'm sorry, but that's just the nature of the 40B process. So I would ask once again in conclusion, you put your request in writing and we'll respond relative to, you know, what we will do prior, you know, in the immediate future with some milestones on when we'll be able to deliver that. And then, you know, what we plan to do post-permitting, which the board can certainly condition in the comprehensive permit. That will be a condition of us receiving a building permit, which is the ultimate stick on any 40B. If we don't satisfy that, we can't get a building permit. And that's pretty good leverage for a town.
But, but we can't, we can't defer the decision with respect to onsite wastewater treatment versus connection to a municipal sewer. We don't have the information we need to make that decision.
Well, I would respectfully disagree. I think we'll be able to provide enough evidence that the system has adequate capacity. I think Mr. Dan, I certainly don't speak for him. I have nothing but respect for he and his team. I think it's pretty clear and based on the town's own report done by CDR McGuire, you have capacity in the system. You know, there's certain things that we have to do on our end to connect and we have to work with Mr. Dan and his team on those designs. But, I mean, we've talked about it for the last two hours. So we can provide a little bit more information, but I'm not sure what else the board is looking for us to provide.
We'll give him two minutes.
Thank you. We will work with Mr. Dan on coming up with the requirements. Is that appropriate, Mr. Gutcher?
Yes, that would be fine. I mean, let's not get caught up in semantics. You're gonna need some engineering analysis of sufficient detail to act on it. I know that they're not gonna have complete engineered plans, but you're gonna need sufficient detail to be able to act on this. And yeah, the DPW director could give some suggestions about what he wants to see. And then you also need a commitment about the, you know, the funded peer review of that and comments on it.
Mr. Engler.
I'm not sure the question.
The funding of the peer review.
Yeah, I believe I committed to allowing the town to reach out to Tatum Howard to perform a capacity analysis of the existing sewer system.
I mean, you're also gonna need, you know, again, if you follow the structure that I talked about earlier, first making the case for it to begin with, and then sufficient detail so that the DPW director and your peer reviewer can review it and comment on it. And then details about what actually the infrastructure is going to be, anticipated cost, a sharing agreement, issues that are gonna, assuming you allow the connection, that are gonna enable you to grant, to impose conditions related to the construction of the infrastructure. So you need costs, anticipated, what the share is going to be, who's paying what. You're gonna need details on that for potential conditions related to it. And I understand some of the stuff will be subject to approval or confirmation later, but you're gonna need sufficient information so that you can reasonably condition the connection in the event that you grant it.
Well, I would, oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on. Let me call on Chuck Dan. He has his hand raised.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, I guess, clarify kind of the scope or my duty for contacting Tatum Howard. Are we going to be provided a scope from the applicant that we have them price and agree to, you know, do the peer review? Or are we having them do what I heard was that we were gonna have them do the capacity analysis? And then, you know, they would, as was stated, you know, adjust their pump station design accordingly. I don't, I'm not sure which comes first, I guess, and what they're responding to. When they find out to contact them.
What's your preference?
I mean, it would be easier for them and, you know, cheaper for the applicant if they, you know, and their engineers did the capacity analysis and had Tatum Howard our engineer vet it. But if that's not what they wanna do, then, you know, I don't know. I would have to talk to Tatum Howard about their availability and timing for conducting it on their own. So it is a little bit different one way or another. And I'm happy to take this offline, you know, and work with the three of them or the, you know, us as well as the applicant and Tatum Howard. But it just, I'm not clear right now what comes first.
Okay. Mr. Quin.
Hi, thank you. I think it would be helpful if we could coordinate with Chuck just to, because what we wanna provide is what, you know, we wanna understand what he'd be looking for, for the capacity analysis. If we could just coordinate with him offline on what makes sense to do, that would be preferable for everybody, I think, because it's a little complicated to speak to in a public forum. And I think just taking a look at the system with Chuck and understanding what the issues might be would be helpful just to go through and coordinate with Chuck offline, if that's agreeable.
Okay.
Madam Chair, presuming that that's okay with the board based on, I mean, you know, it's a little bit of an awkward situation in that I can't talk to my team, you know, we're doing this in real time. But, you know, based on our discussions with Mr. Dan today, they've been very helpful. And he and his team talking with our team, they can come up with, you know, the scope. And then I need to talk to my team about what, you know, the timing of delivering on something like that. But presumably, whether it's we or Tatum and Howard, will endeavor to, you know, to provide that analysis as soon as possible, which would mean that Tatum and Howard has to do less work. They're just reviewing the work that we do rather than generating their own work.
Do you have any guess on?
Carlton, how long does it take to?
The last time, yeah.
Holding you, how long, you know, based on, without knowing what Chuck's gonna say, your best guess on to do the type of capacity analysis that's being discussed?
I think it'll probably take a week or two for me to coordinate with Chuck to look at the system, to see what are the key points, the pinch points of the system. We'll need to hire a third party to do a flow analysis where they stick flow monitors into the manholes at these points and take some rainfall data to see what the flows are in the pipes. That typically is a minimum of two weeks. It should be done prior to April to June, I think is typically the peak time you do it. Then they probably need a week to get that information, to get those things into the sewer manhole. So it's gotta be four weeks at least, maybe six, before we'd have a final kind of analysis done if we kick it off tomorrow.
So it takes six weeks to do the report and then two weeks for Tatum and Howard to review the report? Give or take, right?
Yeah, we could get them on board early and just so that they're teed up for it would be sound appropriate.
So does that mean it would be appropriate, Mr. Engler, to extend the public hearing out to July 28?
No, it doesn't. Not now, it doesn't, Madam Chair.
Okay.
But with that said, I am authorizing Carlton to work with Mr. Dan on the scope and the work and the like, so.
You understand that eight weeks goes beyond.
I understand that, Madam Chair. But I also understand if there's some waivers on some of the environmental stuff that the board's not gonna grant, then it doesn't matter. Then we could have the best sewer capacity analysis known to mankind, but we can't build the project because you guys, the board, you know, is not budging on some of the other issues. This is a multi-layered stool. And if one leg gets kicked out, the whole thing falls over. So respectfully, I'm not giving an extension tonight when there's still lots of work to happen between now and then that could basically, you know, subvert the whole process and make the sewer capacity analysis, you know, moot because we're gonna have to appeal the decision. So I hope the board understands my position that if this was the only issue on the table and the board was saying everything else is okay, the waivers that you've submitted were okay, the design is okay, the site plan is okay, but we just need to have this capacity analysis to know the sewer could work. I would say, yeah, let's extend. But we're not at that position. We're not even close. So we'll begin the work and, you know, and we'll see what happens over the next several hearings. But there's still lots of other issues out there that the board seems entrenched on. For instance, the second means of egress. I mean, where's the board on that? If you're gonna require that, then there's not much to talk about on these other issues. So hopefully, the board understands. I'm not asking you to like my position, but I'm asking you to understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. And Mr. Hill, do you have something quick?
Yeah, I'm just outraged by that comment. Mr. Engler has thrown this board for a loop by proposing a complete change, a very substantial change to this application five months into the project. It's completely antithetical to the process, to the 40B public hearing process, to expect the board to continue to work towards that current deadline and still have to perform a brand-new review that's gonna take, we just heard, probably two months to do. This is very bad faith on the part of the applicant. And I just want to state for the record that we are very disappointed and the board should be as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Anyone from the board wish to say anything else during public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dijik.
We've heard a number of comments tonight from our speakers. The one that I find interesting is, it's been mentioned at least twice that the select board or the selectmen would prefer an onsite sewage treatment plant rather than connection to the town sewer system. My question is, was that preference of theirs prior to knowing that we could do this, that we have the capacity to do that and that the state was changing its position? Or is that actually their preference?
We, we received a letter from the Board of Selectmen as sewer commissions regarding their vote at their last meeting.
And that they still have a preference that be an onsite plant?
They have a policy, not a preference. And the policy is that you need to explain why the onsite is not appropriate or not feasible before you can connect to the municipal.
Then I'd like to suggest that someone from the sewage board come and explain their policy to us because that's an interesting point.
We received it in a letter, Jim.
Yeah. All they said, that's their policy. What's it based on? Is what are the facts behind it? Is it just their opinion? It's just their feeling or are there some facts?
It's the whole comprehensive management wastewater treatment, management plan. We can offline this, okay? Uh, Brian?
Yeah, I just wanna echo Mr. Hill's comments and put on the record that the applicant changed the rules of the game. And, okay, which necessitates a longer period of time to review these things. And his unwillingness to recognize that he's the one that changed the rules is troubling to me. And I just want to make, state that, make that on record. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, I didn't change the rules of the game. I responded to concerns issued by the town and the neighbors. I didn't arbitrarily make a change five months into it. This is a better plan. It addresses more concerns of the town and the neighbors. So to say that, like, I nefariously pivoted late in the process to create more challenges and difficulties, that's not accurate, nor is it. So I understand the board's unhappy, but I mean, I understand how this originated.
Mr. Engler, I am not gonna go back and forth on this. The fact of the matter is, you submitted an application to us last September in April or March. In March, you changed the grounds of your application. For whatever reason, you changed it. And you can't expect us to assume you're gonna make a change. I'll take one more question from the public. Andrew.
Hi, yes, Andrew Lane, 50 Beach Street. I would just like to remind, echoing Mr. Solace's point, I would like to remind everyone that the applicant is the one that picked this location for this development, and it's clearly not ideal. And he's, the fact that he's unwilling to provide the necessary information or to answer the questions appropriately or to even entertain another extension for the public hearing is, I think, it's pretty ridiculous. And that's just all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dijik, do you have something you wish to add?
I was simply going to support your position, Madam Chair, that I am in total agreement with you. Regardless of the reasons, we are faced with a different situation than we were faced with a month ago. And because of that, I think it is not unreasonable to ask Mr. Engler for consideration to extend our time so that we can properly evaluate it. His refusal to do that at this point, to me, is showing a little bit of bad faith. But, and I will shut up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. With that, I will make a motion to, we will put in writing to Mr. Engler what we're looking for and we'll work with Chuck Dan regarding the municipal sewer and water connections. And then he will work with the consultants to figure it out. With that, I move to continue the public hearing of the 40B application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street, Assessor's Map, 43 Lot Number 18 filed with the town clerk on September 27, 2021 to May 11, 2022, with the agenda to cover architectural peer review and environmental peer review with respect to the waiver requests. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim, seconds. I'll take a roll call. Is there any discussion?
Sorry, you want to add at 7:00 PM?
Thank you, at 7:00 PM. I'll take a roll call vote. James?
Yes, approved.
Jim? Jim?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to administrative matters.
I'm going to say good night, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puchin.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We have minutes from March 9th, 2022. Did people have an opportunity to review those? They sent them on April 11th and I resent them probably this afternoon because I got going late today. Did anybody have a chance to review those?
I have not, Sarah.
Okay.
I did.
John did? No. Okay, then we will review those minutes at our May 11th meeting.
Sarah, you sent them today?
Yeah, I resent them today. I sent two emails today.
I got one.
The first one included three other pieces of information for the meeting and then I sent the one with the minutes after that. And you were on it.
That's very interesting. It has not appeared in the inbox.
Maybe I'm spam.
Could be.
Maybe I'm in garbage.
Never. Never.
Trash. Excuse me, it's trash, isn't it?
I don't know if I got it either, the minutes. So just, I mean, maybe it just got stuck in your outbox or something. I don't know. I don't think you got it with trash or garbage, but.
Okay, I'll send again.
Good. Yeah.
Sorry, Sarah, I didn't receive them either.
Oh, well.
There you go.
Sorry.
I'm not going to check spam now. On your plate.
Eric's James, I, I did get them, so all was not lost.
You got them?
I did.
Oh.
I got them too.
Okay. Um, I sent them from my laptop, not my phone. Because sometimes I have issues with my phone.
Neither, neither, neither. I got them.
Oh, good. You guys just didn't look.
No, I, I'm, I'm just saying. Everyone else is showing off that they've got them. I haven't seen it yet.
Oh, okay. Um, maybe it's Comcast network. Is there anything else we need to discuss? People are clear on our next meeting. We've received a response from the applicant on the architectural peer review and they sent us new plans. Um, we haven't heard back from the peer reviewer on that. Um, and we received an update on the environmental waiver request from Beals and Thomas maybe yesterday, today or yesterday. So those will be the subject of our next meeting along with minutes. Is there anything else people feel we need to go over?
No.
No. Okay. Are you going to say something, Greg? Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Sean moves to adjourn. Who seconds?
I'll second.
Brian seconds. I'll take a roll call vote. James?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
And Catherine and our helper?
Approved.
Hi. Must be past bedtime.
I know it was for me. I can't speak for her.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.